I don't know, but.
That's a welfare issue, though. I mean, that's like a CPS.
Yeah, but that's that's on.
Oh, on the ballot? Very informative.
Oppositions are there?
They're probably just bills at this point. Do we have a council member? Okay, everybody good with starting? Everybody ready? Okay, with that, we will start our Selma City Council Special Meeting. It's April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. In the Selma City Council Chamber is at seventeen ten Tucker Street. Selma teleconferencing phone number is one three zero one. Seven one five eight five nine two. The webinar ID is eight nine one six eight six four. Five zero zero five. Went on the phone. If you wish to address the council during the public comment portion of the agenda, press star nine to raise hand. And we will select you from the meeting queues. Press star six to unmute and mute yourself. You call the roll, please, city clerk.
Councilmember Gara?
Here.
Councilmember Tree Hill? Mayor Potemcho?
Here.
Mayor Robertson?
Here. Potential conflicts of interest. Any council member who has a potential conflict of interest may now identify the item and recuse themselves from discussing and voting on the matter. Agenda changes or deletions to better accommodate members of the public or inconvenience in the order of presentation. Items on the agenda may not be presented or acted upon on the order listed. Additions to agenda may be added only pursuant to California Government Code Section five four nine five four dot two B. Oral communications. At this time, any member of the public may address the city council. Regarding any item on the special meeting agenda over which the council has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will be taken on any item not on the agenda. Issues raised will be referred to city manager for review. Members of the public shall limit their remarks to three minutes. We have anybody oral communications at this time? We have anybody on the phone or online would like to say anything at this point? With that, we will move into our workshop. Regular business item, which is a discussion on the preliminary twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, we're back in this exciting time um that we go through every year, development of the budget. Um, and uh, we have a lot of new faces this time around. And so um, I just wanted to say thank you to all the staff, in particular, the finance staff. That has been instrumental in um kicking off the process and getting us to this point where we can present. Um, some of the the major high level stuff that uh, we're going to be proposing as part of our fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget. The way that we're presenting the uh, the information tonight is um, the finance team and all the department heads and deputy city managers have. Um, provided what they uh, what they consider to be the most important um, projects. And programs that we're going to be requesting in the upcoming budget. This um, presentation is not meant to be detailed or into the weeds. We'll have an opportunity to get uh, really deep into the weeds on the on the operating budget and the numbers when we present the draft budget in June. So this this sets the framework for the major proposed expenditures and and getting councils feedback on whether these projects are actually what you want to pursue. With our limited resources and whether they align with the priorities that you've previously set for the city. So I'll go ahead and uh, turn it over to our deputy city manager, Jasmine Baines, for um, some further uh, details and and um, to kick off the presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Um, this is the first of the budget workshops for the twenty-two, twenty, twenty. Twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget. And so um, just uh, the first slide here highlights the council's priorities that were set. Um, that are going to s- set the framework for this year's budget. Um. So, public safety, infrastructure, downtown downtown revitalization, community engagement. Customer service and staffing and parks and facilities. Um, the the format of the of tonight's workshop is for uh, each one of the develop uh, department heads. To come up to the council and to outline and highlight the projects that um, they're uh, they have, they have planned for. Uh, as uh, city manager Santian said. And so this is the first workshop. Um, and this, we will take the information tonight and develop the um, maintenance, the maintenance and operation portion of the budget. And bring forth the uh, draft budget to the city council uh, June fifth. And then from there, uh, we will take the feedback from city council. Uh, and develop the uh, budget for adoption at the second council meeting in June, which would be June nineteenth. And next slide, please. Um, so the format of the this, the slides is set up in such where um, it allows. Uh, it's got the project requests, the descriptions, the budgeted cost. Um, and every, as we were um, the funding source for these projects, as well as the estimated fund balance to give uh, council a guiding. Uh, direction as far as what the financial condition of that particular fund is at the current moment. And so I'll turn it over to Chief Alcaraz to go over his.
And it, before chief gets started, I I will add to add to um, deputy city manager's Baines um, comment about the fund balance that's presented. There will be some projects that are, that either have multiple funds that are funding it, or there's grants, or there's um, things that aren't necessarily something that we can calculate. In terms of the balance, so we've left those blank, but um, if there's any additional information that we can follow up with, please feel free to let us know. Go ahead, chief.
Yes, sir. Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, in front of you, you have our estimated. Either new projects or project enhancements. It must be the bling. With that, uh, one of the first uh, project requests it's uh, highlighted here is a new crime analyst position. The reason for that is uh, we are reorganizing uh, the Selma Police Department. More importantly, we are changing the way that we do business. As uh, police policing strategies have evolved over the last few decades. Uh, we have to use uh, more technology, software analytics to make our labor force more efficient. And thus the reasoning for the crime analyst. If you can imagine, um. Just to give you a brief kind of idea, um, our our new officers, uh. As many of our new generations, they live and die with that screen that's in front of them, right? They don't normally go out and say, hey, how you doing? And talk to people like we've done in the past, some of us older generations, right? So what the crime analysts are able to do is they're able to, now that we capture a tremendous amount of data, a crime analyst has the ability to. Abstract that data with oversight and guidance from our detectives or administrative um, members. And present that data in a way that's going to be easily read for our patrolmen. And then more importantly, many times for the, for juries when we're looking at prosecuting cases, right? They're gonna be able to put string charts and flow charts together. That's gonna help us uh, present a more prosecutable case. And as our prosecutions and and uh, crimes solvability increases. Crime naturally decreases, and that's looking to where, getting us to where we want to go. So when I talk about these next few projects, a lot of these projects are all intermittent, they're all intertwined, right? Um, it's what we're trying to do for the future of the Selma Police Department, the city of Selma. With regards to law enforcement services, not just today, but for the next fifty years. And this is how we get there. So with that, that would, that's the new crime analyst position and and the necessity for that, we feel.
Hey, chief, just a, just a quick question. This crime, new crime analyst position, what is it equivalent to? Is it equivalent to a peace officer? Or is it equivalent to a staff? Uh, free staff person?
I- i- it's more, it's more staff. So um, it's more, you know, crime analysts don't go out to the field. It it's kind of like a hybrid between a detective and a patrolman when it comes to how we gather information, how we process information. And then how we present that information. It it's, it's almost like. You know, you can buy a gift, but then the person that wraps the gift and presents it, that's what a crime analyst does, right? They take that information, they find out this, this is the, the gift wrap that's gonna be most suitable for this eight-year-old child. Or this is a gift wrap that's most suitable for the eighty-year-old uh, grandfather, right? They're, they're taking that data and presenting in a way that is gonna be easily read and easily understood to the reader.
The way I would, oh, sorry, chief. The way I would, I understand it is they're the intelligence part of the, of the police department. They gather that intelligence and then um, support the actual enforcement operations.
Are they a sworn officer?
I don't believe they will be, no. They're more administrative staff position, yeah.
So does that give like, say, uh, a dispatch or say a police? What are they called? The police clerks? I don't know if they're still called police clerks or not, but.
Yes, they are.
They are, okay. Now, does that give them, if they do so much experience, you know, say, so many years in the department? Does that give them uh, a step for promotion? Cause that'd probably be a promotion, right, for an individual?
So currently that we're requiring a bachelor's degree uh, due to the salary and and. Uh, because these are so, the the crime analyst position is still relatively new position within law enforcement. And I say new is even in the Bay Area, maybe ten years, the these positions have really become really clearly identified. And become more mainstream to law enforcement, if that makes sense at all.
Yeah.
So if you can imagine how, we've been in law enforcement for how many years? Ten years to have a crime analyst is still relatively new. However, what? I don't want to talk about future, but uh, we always love to have redundancies within the police department. So this, this position allows some of those redundancies in the future as we get training and 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 can really. Um, get this program off and running and and kind of work out the kinks, if you will, for this crime analyst position, position. At the Selma Police Department, if that makes sense at all. So I, I believe there's um, some forensic classes over at Fresno State for for uh, just for an example. Where this is their emphasis and that would, we would be targeting that, that uh, market of labor.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll move on to the second, additional communications improvements. So as we, in our last council meeting, we talked about eighteen resident or eighteen developments. Uh, improvements to the north end of Selma. We are looking to enhance our radio communications to the north end of Selma. We came man, the, we came to you all in the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, asking for sixty thousand dollar a budget amendment. For this program itself. Unfortunately, with uh, supply chain issues and all the other things that are going on, inflation. Uh, what we thought would be sixty thousand uh, is now we have a quote for a hundred and five thousand. So we're looking for an additional forty-five thousand dollars to um, complete that project. That's going to go uh, to enhancing our radio communications and clarity on the north end of Selma. In, yes, sir.
PD Construction Fund four five seven, what's that?
It it's for uh, the the construction fund, so infrastructure for the police department. And and because this is an infrastructure piece, we we routed it to that fund.
And that balance is um, currently three hundred thousand?
Right, roughly, correct, yes, sir.
Yeah, those are just the names of the funds in that column, the funding source.
When you say the north side, you're talking north of Selma?
No, no, the north, north, uh, so Dinuba McCall, um. Dinuba Orange in that area, the the northern territory of Selma. And those, those are our radios as we're going in and out of houses, buildings and structures uh, over on that end. The, this will also enhance our communications with Parlier as well. Not that that's a priority, but uh, as we built, again. We talked about the, I believe it was the Cerimian or Amberwood Track, which is the north end. Once you start adding, you know, five hundred to two thousand homes. That's going to uh, really start to kind of take away from our clarity and radio enhancements and communications. Now, depending on that, that those future um, developments, I'm not saying this is gonna fix it completely. You know, with with what technology, you're always looking to enhance uh, our our radio communications. But it it's where we're defining a, a shortcoming, and we want to, we want to fix that for our sa- the safety of our officers.
Is that cameras or is that a radio?
No, that, that's purely radio communications. Yes, sir. Okay, so on the third, uh, the surveillance program enhancement, we're looking. And and we talked about this in several council meetings earlier about enhancing our camera systems and upgrades. Uh, so what we're looking to do is uh, I I don't have quotes because we have a lot of needs, if you will. We want to enhance some of our older intersections on the east part of town and add cameras, and I'll give you a great example. Currently, we don't have any cameras at the Rose and Dockery uh, intersection. I would love to have cameras at that location because that's a main thoroughfare in and out of Selma, especially when someone's committing crimes. And then we're chasing them where they commit a crime and they, they leave our town in that direction. We want to be able to capture that event so that we have a, a more um. A, a better, I should say, a better investigative uh, lead to solve that crime. Right? Anything we can do to get more information is is great. And then the crime analyst goes to sifting through that information. Because if you look at your cell phones, right, you look on social media or whatever, whatever the case may be. There's a lot of information, sometimes information overload, and you have to be able to go through that information, sift through it, take the credible information. And then see how that information fits in with the other pieces that we have. And that's not so much in, in the, the, the crime itself. But uh, bits and pieces of the crime, because a lot of our, a lot of our criminals use those phones. That, that's, that's their, it's their lifeline. It's like a diary, really. It's like a diary for them. They talk on that, they communicate in that, they have apps on that where they're sharing information, sharing uh, photos of Indisha. That are crucial to, to our cases. And and that's really our, our emphasis. Uh, so it's not just having the tools, but then the personnel and the expertise and training. To, to be able to utilize that, that data to be successful.
So I have a question in regards to that. Can I, excuse me, sorry, interrupt you. On the surveillance uh, program, you have a budget cost of two hundred thousand dollars. Or, and I guess this question would be for our city manager. As you guys are looking at the uh, camera needs for the uh, the community. Wouldn't it, uh, I'm just asking, wouldn't it be a, a good um, thought to think about doing a master plan? Analysis on the overview of all the community. And maybe budget to do an analysis on where actually the, where should we be putting the, the cameras? So we can get a total cost on the developed community, so then we can budget for a five to ten-year plan. And understand the cost base right now, and maybe we can tear it down to a couple, to. If we budget right now, we, we get an al- we, we, we budget for analysis and we get it. And we get a, we get a plan of what the whole town's gonna look like when we do a plan of cameras. We get a cost now. We could start chipping away at every budget per year, so we have a two to five to ten year, and we understand and we work toward, towards that. And that's just a question, and I'm not, um, but you know, I applaud this, but I'm thinking maybe in the long run, because this is a huge need and. It'll help us a lot, so I would probably put that in that.
We would absolutely love that. We, we have a kind of back-of-the-napkin plan, but having something more formalized. I know that we're working with uh, Jerome at uh, in planning in regards of ordinances and standards. For our new developments and improvements, which will help a little bit to decrease our costs when we do that. But having a geographical or map of what the city's gonna look like.
I guess maybe what, maybe the question would, for me, would be, maybe it'd be, it would be good to probably look out and get a price quote. To do analysis in that way, so when you can bring it back, maybe we can budget that, so we can have that, so we have that to work with. For our future budgets, and we understand what we're working with.
Yeah, what we could do is um, as we're developing the CIP, the Capital Improvement um, Program. Um, we're in, we can incorporate, you know, we can map out, you know, based on future growth and development, where those locations are gonna be. And then work with engineering and manufacturers to establish a budget. And then I think what I'm understanding from you is I'm breaking it up over that ten-year period. And then, yeah, so we have a clear idea of how we're building out that, that master plan. Okay, we can do that, absolutely.
I'm glad you mentioned that, Councilmember Tree Hill, cause it really goes into my next uh, project line, which is kind of. It's not to answer that question, but to kind of, with regards to thinking and thought and foresight, um, we're looking for uh, three additional patrol units. The cameras are kind of like our patrol units. There's something we're gonna be budgeting for every year. It, it, it's something that as in, as technology improves, as software improves, we want to continually be looking. At these programs and enhancing them, just like patrol cars. We know that patrol cars, they're gonna have a, a, a shelf life, right? And that they're gonna have to be, be replaced at some point in time. So our cameras are, are much, they're not any different, right? So every year we'll be looking at how do we improve with this amount of money? We're gonna prioritize, these are the intersections. That's where that master plan was gonna come in extremely useful to say, okay, now we're gonna do these. We'll, we'll do these intersections or those intersections based on what's our current program is and what we want our future program uh, to be. And we'll be able to overlay that based on developments as well, so that we can be ahead of the curve, if you will. So um, and the reason that we have three additional patrol units is, we would love to have another five. But if we purchase too many vehicles at one time, then we have to replace that amount of vehicles at one time. And when budget constraints uh, become difficult, we're not looking at such a large number, we can do shorter. Shorter portions or or smaller portions that are more palpable to the budget. Yes, sir.
Along with purchasing the vehicles, I understand that we've been, I, I think, I think the uh, mayor and the council's been talking about. Putting cameras in the vehicles. Would it be, I, I, I've seen, my family owns body shops. Is it better when we purchase a new vehicle? I think some of the vehicles already come with some attachments that it makes it easier to add the cameras. Have you looked into that? Is that?
We, we've looked into that. We really think our money is best used with the surveillance cameras, and I'll, and I'll tell you, it's kind of written in that second uh, license plate readers. These, these fixed cameras that are major intersections capture multiple events. With the, the cameras on our cars is just gonna capture that one event. And typically, our officer already has the body cam, so he's gonna capture that event. Um, a lot of the body, or I'm sorry, many of the law enforcement agencies that use the, the um. Patrol cameras are gonna typically be um, agencies like the Highway Patrol or agencies that are, have a lot of rural. Kind of interaction, if you will. So they're kind of set out in, in far away. We're, we're lucky here in the city of Selma. Everyone knows where we're at for the most part. And with that uh, body camera on that officer, we're gonna be able to know where he's at. And it's gonna, it's gonna send us back information. Uh, and and those, those uh, dash cams are extremely expensive uh, for the um, for the cost. For the cost, we can put a lot more LPRs and then video cameras at some of our intersections. And and that's, unless anyone has any questions.
I got a couple.
Yes, sir.
The body cams are a separate item?
See, those are already budgeted for.
Those are budgeted.
We're just waiting.
Saw the memo on the, on the grant, and it's.
And in fact, if we're able to get the, 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 the grant, uh, we were expecting this. We're, we're, we're planning on funding two hundred ninety-two thousand dollars amortized over the next five years. Uh, if we get that grant, that pretty much clears up half of that, which is approximately a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. I would love to use that money uh, to enhance our surveillance program at intersections. And that's kind of why I, I kind of just.
Is that hardware for body cams? Is that the cost for hardware? Is that also the cost for storage?
Yeah, that's, that, that's hardware, uh, analytics, support, storage, all of that. Yes, sir.
Got it. And then um, are, are, is the PD going to uh, be looking at upgrading weapons or training? Would that be part of, of this, this item, or would that be a different item?
We are already budgeted for that. Uh, we're just going through the procurement process at this time.
Okay.
On, on the firearms, yes, sir. And then training, uh, we're, we're, that, that's always ongoing. We're always training.
And how is that budgeted for? Where does that appear?
It, it's in our training budget.
Training budget?
Yeah, it's just training. And then we did, depending on, on the personnel, depending on the necessity. Depending on what training we feel is optimal uh, for, for the, whatever issues we're having, we, we assign training accordingly.
Seems like there are a lot of new officers and the training would be at a premium.
We have a lot of new officers, and and right now, um, we, we've hired a lot of officers, which we'll talk about in the next council meeting. Um, and uh, getting them trained, and and a lot of our training, though, goes through what's called the field training program. Which is our first three to four months. So they really get an abundance of training at the front end. Then we put them out on their own if they're successful, and we, we, we monitor and develop them and then decide. What additional training is needed by way of um. You know, either their individual and or post regulations. So there's a lot of training that post is mandated, that we have to send our, our people to. And then there's other advanced training that we like to send our people to. So we're, we're really working closely, especially with the city manager. On um, what we'd like to do is start bringing instructors in to the Selma Police Department to train our own personnel. And and be much more cost-effective and get that advanced training instead of sending them out, because it's very difficult to find these classes.
The FTOs would be on staff then? They would actually be training officers or just instructors?
No, no, we bring instructors from out of the area. So.
I was gonna say, I don't think we have a training facility.
Yeah, well, well, we have a community room that'll seat about twenty people. So there, and then there's other, there's other venues in the city like the Arts Center, or we have the Senior Center. But uh, there's other venues that, that we'll be able to utilize, but bringing that instructor in instead of sending three guys out. And and what I'll say is, a lot of the training we're looking at are in regards to technology, software. And uh, agencies that have learned how to use this, this equipment well. And uh, and a lot of it, a lot of it comes out of the Bay Area and Southern California. If you can imagine, they have a huge proving grounds. To, to kind of hone in on these technologies.
But all this new technology takes instruction, right? Just to learn how to use them. I remember I had a math class where if you learn how to use a calculator, you got an A. It's just so hard to figure out how to use it. So I would imagine it's the same thing with learning how to use these camera, these body cams and. Whatever, you know, all this other technology.
You'll see this reflected when we bring the draft budget on the, on the fifth of June, what that training budget is gonna look like and. You know, any changes as compared to last year, why it's different with these, with these new requirements.
Chief, the, I think what the mayor's, you know, asking, I think I'm asking the same thing is, is the budgeted item enough? Because we have so many new officers, and I guess the concern to us would be is, is your budget on training and, you know, with, with the cam, with, with.
Never enough.
With guns and, yeah, it's never enough, but I mean, is it with the office that we have?
Yeah.
So, are you okay? Are we okay here?
I never want to turn away. Uh, so, so what I would, what I would say is, right now, what, what we're issued, what. Our challenge is getting these new officers through field training, right? And getting them qualified to go out there and be standalone police officers. Uh, we have those programs in place right now. Right now, training, I don't want to say it's suffering. There's a lot of advanced training I would love to send officers to. But we're so, we're short-staffed. They're having to cover and and meet minimal staffing. Um, so we're looking to, and again, our plan is to be fully staffed by December of twenty-three.
So the big challenge is getting the officers to that, to your hump, to make sure they're.
Correct.
They're gonna last and be.
Correct. And then they're gonna be safe. Correct. And then they're going to be safe, that they're going to be safe, right? That they're going to be safe going out there on their own when they're coming out.
Fired to go out and repair to go out there on their own.
Once they have that base with them, then we're going to do that enhancement, right? But I don't want to put the cart before the horse.
Things first. So that's the first interval.
Yes, sir. But we will, we'll take more training funds. That's.
I I I was um um talking with somebody about um P D a few weeks ago and. They were saying they've seen some police stations that have fences around the vehicles just to prevent vandalism and things like that. Would that be something in the future that would be appropriate for a for a police station?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And and that 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 there's so, yeah, absolutely. There's.
Something in the future.
I can say that that's been a plan for this parking lot back here um for a while. I think the first um thing we have to figure out is ADA accessibility for. You know, because right now that parking lot.
That green, that patch of grass, developing that, or you're talking about the existing.
Fencing fencing the existing parking lot to prevent that kind of thing because um that has been a concern for a while. We just need to be able to identify additional parking. If it's going to be closed off, where are other folks going to park, right? So um we're working on that. We have a um a new parking lot. That's already um in the works in terms of um some grant funding that we received. Um, that little triangle piece off of Mill Mill Street.
That was originally put in there for parking. Eventually, it just didn't happen.
Yep.
One other question. My concern is in regards to the surveillance program where you mentioned that Rosendalkre. We don't even have cameras there. And my concern is that is one of our main streets to go out of town. So for the crimes that have been happening, I'm just now to hear that, you know, I'm really concerned. Do we have enough funded, just like Councilmember Trillo mentioned and and Mayor? Is this enough to know that we have, we can put or upgrade our cameras on these main. Streets that we should have. I would think, you know, again, we want to look at the future as well, but. For that street to be a main street, an exit, you know, to another city, if there's crime, we should have it. We should have had it.
Well, you know, again, I I started in August of twenty two.
I know.
And and what I'll say is I I don't mean, but what I'll say is there's a lot of things that we'd love to have. I have to be uh mindful. That uh having Jerome on board is huge because we have had a lot of great court um conversations about writing our standards. Into our code to ensure that as these developers are developing our city, that we're, we have the ability, the. Ability to be able to make these improvements that are that that create minimal cost to the city, right? Just like, let's say, um piping, so that we're just then running uh wire through that piping. Not actually coring the the ground to to install the piping, which is extremely expensive. But to that note, this kind of goes in hand with uh Councilmember Trillo, having that master plan saying, okay. These are going to be the next, this is this year's. Next year, when we come out for two hundred thousand, these will be the next intersection. Then we can identify. We're actually going to hit this intersection, that intersection. Right now, we're kind of going into it saying, we definitely need. To improve these intersections and then intersections already have cameras, correct? We're going to enhance those cameras, not with just normal P T Z point to zoom cameras, but we're going to enhance them with. L P Rs, license plate reader cameras, which then capture more data for us. So it it, we feel that two hundred thousand dollars is ample to get us through this year. And then. Things like a master plan help us identify, okay, year two, it's going to be the this these intersections. Year three will be these intersections. And then going back and um readdressing some current intersections saying. We're going to take those P T Z cameras and we're going to put L P Rs here based on the data and analytics that we're seeing every every year, right? And making those adjustments.
When this comes back to us in June, we'll have a more detailed, um I would say probably a detailed game plan as to, okay. This year, like Chief mentioned, this is what we're going to cover. And then next year.
Yeah, you'll see the line item budgets with training, with operations, with camera upgrades. Um, and then you'll see the C I P, the capital improvement projects where we're identifying the next ten years of these projects.
If that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, by the way.
Evening, Mayor, members of council. And uh we'll be going over the fire department project list here. And we have a couple items. I'm going to go ahead and just start with the the second item there, the the design for the new fire station. Uh, I'm going to start with that because but we've talked about this for some time and and, you know, council has fully supported. Uh, the new fire station, we're moving moving forward with that. Uh, this will be a carryover uh from last year's budget. Of seven hundred fifty thousand for uh the construction management and design for the new station. The reason why it it being a carryover, we had budgeted for this year. Uh, but we wanted to ensure that we had the funding uh in place. And last year, we did receive. Or not last year, last week, we did receive the four and a half million dollars from the state, uh which Senator Hurtado helped us. Helped us get, but we hadn't received that funding just yet. And there had been, you know, some rumors even. In our circles within the fire service of of some concerns about some state funding. And stuff based on the budget that they were looking at. Uh, so we held off a little bit.
Way over. So she, that's probably what she was calling about. The check's in the mail. It's coming.
We held off a little bit just to ensure that we had that funding in place and we and we do. So.
Okay.
We're looking forward to moving to moving forward with with the design. And we did have identified the ambulance fund, which which will be a funding source for this project. Um, so we're carrying this this line item over into next year as part of this project. Any questions about the the new fire station?
In regards to the design and the actual, where are we looking at right now? Where do we stand with the total cost? And we had a couple of figures, but has anything changed or it's still? Still, we're still, we're just getting to design and what.
We're just getting to the designer. If you're asking about the project as a whole.
Yeah.
Uh, we're still getting into the design aspect of that, how it's going to look, how big it's going to be. And I think once we dive into the size, um attaching headquarters to it, things like that. Then we'll be able to nail down a a good number.
Has that concept been nailed down? Whether it's going to be like a fire station and a civic center or, yeah, is is that been nailed down yet?
No, not particularly. I I think the last discussion that the council and staff had was. What procurement process we were going to utilize for the fire station, whether it was going to be a design build or design. Bid build or, you know, those options. And the council decided to go with the design build. So as part of that process, then we're going to hire a bridging architect to do that initial conceptual design. The sort of ballpark that we were kind of kicking around with the um with different sources um. Based on the what the square uh per square foot cost of construction right now is. We were looking at anywhere between eight to ten million dollars for just the fire station with admin offices. That does not include any, you know, community uh center or anything like that, right? So um that's kind of what we're looking at. If it's just a fire station with admin, um we would probably expect about eight to ten million dollars.
Wouldn't it, wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be uh cost effective to probably, I'm just asking, to add some type of civic center there? And and look to see what our cost would be because we have the property. Just to see what kick around what, you know, that area is prime for it. So what are we using? What about two acres for that fire station?
Right around two acres. And the property as a whole is, I believe, when we first, it was four point, four point two, I believe, four and a half, yeah.
That would qualify for another grant, you know, if we can, we can say it's going to be a a, you know, like a. Boys and girls club or something where there there's funding, you know, maybe we can get a grant for something.
A long time.
Well, there are funding sources. One of our plans and conversations we've had um with the county is to. Go for C D B G over the counter funds. And this is kind of going off topic, but you know, we, right now, we get an an allocation of about two hundred fifty thousand dollars. A year from C D B G. Well, that's not going to be enough to build, for example, a community center. We're looking at ways that we can maybe step away from that. Um, you know, what we call, um, uh, what's the term? Where we get automatically get those two hundred fifty? Well, we step away from that and then we can be in the competitive application process where we can go up to eight million dollars, right? And that would fund a community center. But it, but we would reflect it in the capital improvement program in terms of. At what year do we actually want to pursue that? I think the council's decision ultimately has to be. We have enough funding for the ambulance fund. We have the four and a half million, um, excuse me, for the fire station. We have the four and a half million that we got from the state. And we have about four million roughly in the ambulance fund. Should be enough to to fund the fire station. Do we want to focus on that right now? And then look at separate grant projects to build out. Like Councilman Trillo said, we have the space. It's just a matter of us finding the the grant funding for it.
I don't think it's going to hurt to get the bid anyway, since we're going out for bid. I think it'd be good to get the bid for the fire station and then a bid with the fire station and the community center or whatever.
Well, we would have to, so getting a bid implies that you're actually going to get somebody under contract, right? And we we wouldn't be at that point where we would.
They're not doing designed bid.
Right. And then the the funding for the fire station, it has to be limited to the fire station itself, right?
So question, uh, I know the next item is going to be another fire, I mean, other ambulance, correct?
Correct.
So we have the uh, we have the station on floor. Where are we going to park all our fire, our ambulances? Is it going to be in the same area?
We're anticipating, once we move our our, most of our fire department over to the new facility. We will have uh an ambulance will be stationed in the new facility along with the fire apparatus that is currently at the A Street facility.
Okay.
We would then take uh the rest of our ambulance staff out of the the. Old doctor's office that we rent right now by the hospital and move them into the A Street station, which then does put them in a more centralized. Location in town.
What happens to the front street location?
Front street stays, stays as is. It it. It minimizes because we'll be moving most of our staff to the new fire station. We currently have. Uh, four to five staff located at the east front or west front location. And it's designed for two. So it it will take that down to a single engine company station, which is at this time what it's designed.
Does the city own that? City owns that property on Front Street? I'm thinking of that old police station. What if the city somehow found the funds to. Get rid of that asbestos and turn that into the fire station over there. Be a lot more capacity. Just, you know, for the future. Maybe someday.
Yeah. Any other questions related to the new station?
All right. What about staff? How are we with staff right now?
Daffing, we are at full staff. We we just created an opening with the addition of the new division chief. Position, which which I'm I'm happy to announce that we finished the recruitment process for that and promotions have taken place in that new position will start. Uh, this Saturday.
You know who was made division chief?
I do. It's 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 Captain Paul Dimmers. He's he's going to be our our newest division chief. And that is public information. So, okay. Yes. So uh otherwise, we we are at full staff. Which will take uh, take me to our next project is, yes, the a new ambulance. And we currently have four ambulances. Um, this would would take us to five. Our our goal has always been to get to where we have four operational ambulances. In service. This provides us with that uh extra ambulance when we do have an incident. And and unfortunately, uh, we did yesterday, we we had uh an ambulance involved in an accident up on Highway one sixty eight. Uh, unfortunately, they were struck by an out of control driver and and damaged the unit. The crew is thankfully okay. However, the the unit was damaged enough that it'll be out of service for. You know, a significant period of time while it gets repaired. So these things do happen, which brings up the need to to have. A spare backup ambulance to be placed into service when when mechanical issues and things like that happen. That's what this one will allow us to do to continue then to have uh four ambulances staffed.
Still have a mutual agree aid agreement with the county, where if you're down, if our city is down or on, they're all on calls. Other agencies respond to those medical emergencies.
That that is correct. That's a, that's a countywide process with which dispatch looks at closest units and and. You know, if our units are out of the area, other units are brought in, vice versa, you know, in in our units going into other areas as well.
But then they get the revenue for that. And that can potentially reduce the I G T, right?
That's correct. Whatever, whatever unit responds, it does the billing for that, for that call. That's correct. Any other questions related to the new ambulance? Okay.
Quick question. Training, like we talked about with the P D, I don't think, it seems like the fire. Um, personnel have been around a little bit longer. There's maybe a little more tenure in that. Does that make training? Less necessary or does it change the type of training that's necessary? Because I think you're always learning, always having to see what's going on.
Change, it changes. We'll never say that training is not necessary. Training is necessary every day. Our, our, our goal. One of our standards is continuous improvement. So each each person improves every day. It to some extent, it doesn't matter what it is, but we work to improve. And training is an incredibly important part of that, that aspect. We use our training facility uh probably on a daily basis. Crews are out there working different, different tactical objectives and things like that. We also send staff using our training budget. We send staff to schools, uh classes. We have a, we have a group. Uh, that's been at a class all week and it's a a leadership class and development.
Same manager, we'll see part of that budget as training for the fire as well, just like the P D.
Yeah, for all departments.
All right. I think fleet's next, right? And I'll I'll go ahead and address fleet. Um, you see this as a as a council priority for enhanced public safety, which could be considered. Uh, a little obscure with with related to fleet. But in this instance, it it truly is, it's it's for two. Uh, new diagnostic scanners for the city mechanic. And what that will allow him to do is. Uh, diagnose issues within heavy equipment and Mercedes, which is our ambulances. So at this time, he doesn't have that capability. He either has to uh borrow. A a scanner from another location, say the school district or something like that, or he has to send the units off to the dealerships. To have them diagnose any mechanical issues. So that's, this expenditure is for two scanners. We're still evaluating the need for two, potentially. We may have located one. We're waiting to hear back from. Uh, the manufacturer, but we may have located one that'll actually do both diagnostics for heavy equipment and Mercedes. And and if we're able to identify that, that'll cut the cost by.
That's vehicles these days, right? You can't even get under the hood of your car anymore. That's these diagnostics on them.
That's absolutely true. Everything is is computer.
Yeah.
So by ensuring that he can diagnose our ambulances, our heavy equipment, fire engines. He can make repairs fa- much faster than sending them up to dealerships. And and that's how it fits into that enhancing public safety priority because we get to turn around much faster and and get them back into service.
Quick question, since the city has uh the, is the the location for the F C R team um maintenance. Would we be able to utilize their services? Maybe if we have some repairs or a a surplus of repairs?
I would, I would think that that would potentially be some type of an agreement or option that that we could work out with with them.
Yeah, I I and I, that's always a conversation that can be had. I know um unfortunately for the transit uh division, they're severely understaffed. And their their fleet continues to grow. So I think um that conversation with Moses can be had um and we'll see where they're at in terms of staffing and any partnership. Yeah, absolutely.
Right. Mutual aid or something.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Um, here's just a quick kind of rundown of what we're dealing with here in our department and some of the requests that we have. As you guys know, um, or as council had previously requested, we want to see more community engagement. So. You'll see that my asks are are less on an actual um equipment piece with the exception of one. And more on how we can enhance our programs. But before I I dive into this, I did want to let everyone know um that I've, and and thank Jasmine. Um, we've really been working within our department to become a little bit more self sustaining and not rely so heavily on the general fund. Um, for a lot of our events and programs. Um, the goal in community services, when we provide these events, is to have a good balance of self sent uh self funding. Uh, programs and then and then things that are actually, um, you know, supported by the general fund. In addition to that. And then, and then things that are actually, um, you know, supported by the general fund. In addition to that. The current way that our, our reports and our GLs and all of that, our, our financials and community services. Didn't really give us a good picture of what we were dealing with within our financials. Everything came out of one line item and left out of another line item. And that's really hard when we want to start making. You know, educated guestimates for the next year. How can we improve? What do we need to take away? How do we need to make it better? So. We've added about eight to 10 probably new GL codes within the community services department. And those are going to be things like program revenue and then expenses. It's also going to be things like special events, revenue and expenses. Adult sports. So we've kind of broken it down so that we can begin to properly track. How we run our, our programs and our services within our departments. Um, and then by doing that, we can make decisions into the future. So some of these you'll see next to the funding sources that it'll say potential for cost recovery. And what we mean by that is, is because we're adding. These new events, they will cost additional money, but we will be able to have some cost recovery. We're guestimating right now because we don't have historical data points on a lot of this, but we're making. You know, based off of vendor fees or participation fees or sponsorships, partnerships, things like that. So, um, I'll, I'll, I'll head right into the, um, community guides. One of the things that we would really like to see within our department is more information and how we're getting it out to the community. Um, I know you guys have been to other communities and they have those really fancy program guides and community guides and, and things like that while we're. We're, we're, we're gonna like take steps to get there. One of the things that we want to do is be able to have the money budgeted. To continue, to start to do the flyers. So if we decide to do that, we, something like a, um, movies, um, in the park series. That is something that we can then create the flyers, mail them out to residents, um, get, you know, just get more information out there. Um, and so that is what that additional $5,000, um, we are requesting in next year's budget. And it, does anybody have any questions on that before I go into the next line? Yes.
I have a question and it doesn't pertain to this item pertains just everything in jet, just in general community services. Does this, uh, this community engage, this community engagement services include? If involvement with boards that are pertaining with our city in regards to like, uh. The BID, the Pioneer Village. Because, I mean. As I look at it. Uh, we sit here on the city council and what we're doing is we're. You, you know, you, you, you brought, you brought up really quick, a really good idea about getting the community out and getting, getting the service out. But in returns. The dividend of a money to me is not as important as a dividend of a, of a, of a community member getting involved. And if we have involvement and we've all talked about that we have, you know, we have the art center. Them making money versus getting the community involved. One of the biggest items that I would like to see in the future. Is an analysis on. The, the art center, how much businesses, how many retail businesses, restaurants are being adequately used? And being contacted to use that facility when you guys do have events. That's one. Number two, how many times does our community schools and public events are using that facility versus how much? People from out of Selma are using the facility. I, I, you know, I have a business here and I see that they're building and they're doing really good, but. I also want to see the engagement of our community because it is our community, uh, facility. So. I would like to see more of not a dividend earned, but a dividend in return in regards to the community activity. In regards to community boards. Pioneer Village, when's the last time they've met? How many times have they met?
They, they were unable, we were unable to meet last month because I was at the, but they met the month before.
What I would like to do is get, get our staff to give us an analysis as how many meetings they've, they've been having, how many times they've been meeting. Uh, same thing with the BID. I know that we invested money into the BID Business Improvement District last year. Uh, one of the things that we, we invested was to make sure that we would, we actually approved it in the city council. To have a line item into the property or the business licensing that they would already get taxed. Uh, we haven't done that. So we've lost money there or have we done it?
The, we were waiting for the bid to, or the group to actually form with enough people to have a quorum, but that'll be the next step.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, so those are things that I would like to see on our next meeting. To see about what the outreach is in regards to all the community contact. That's the dividend that I would like to see. So when we talk about community events, we are including our boards, right?
Yes. So I, I will be coming, actually I will, uh, and, and city manager has seen this. Um, I will be coming to council at the next meeting to give a special presentation on all of this, how we're getting these baseline assess, uh, assessments. The process in which we're taking to involve our community, our stakeholders, our, our partners, and all of that is included within that report. For the exact same reason, um, that you're requesting is. The, the point here for the potential for cost recovery was just to soften, maybe soften the blow a little bit about additional expenses. But there is an overall. Plan in place that we have been working on internally. To get to these assessments so that we can start to make decisions like this into the future. And actually have historical data instead of a lot of, well, I think someone said, or I think. We need those data points. And so we have started collecting those, um, even down to, um, and again, thank you to our city engineer. David for getting, you know, even just as simple as I need a map. I need to see where our parks are. Where are we using multi-use basins? Where are they in location to our schools? Those are the kind of questions that we are currently in the process and, and I'll go more in depth, um, at the next council meeting. But yes, absolutely. I, I agree with you wholeheartedly.
And, and I will just add that the rollout of open gov, um, that platform has really increased our ability to get those, uh, statistics. Cause now we can run reports and you know, who's requesting the use of the shelter or the art center or whatever it is and where are they coming from? So. But yeah, um, uh, Community Services Director Smart has really been, um, very proactive on that front.
In terms of the BID. Um, the board does not have a quorum yet. I thought they, they had four.
Yes, we do now. We do now and we are moving forward. Yes, we have been able and we did. You guys will be getting, um. Not this council meeting, but I believe it'll be the next one will be the newest applicants that have applied for your formal approval so that we can then move forward with them as well.
Council would approve the members and then they would have a meeting and they're gonna try to run. According to the Brown Act, like publicly notice their meetings, not necessarily Brown Act, but. They'll notice their meetings. They'll let the community know they're gonna meet, invite people to come to their meetings. Yeah.
Yep. And it gets, and it gets posted. It gets posted outside of city hall and all of that as well. Yes.
Again, that's be good for community engagement.
Yep, absolutely.
Amy, I'd just like to add as well in regards to, um, community engagement, you know. Use utilizing, like we're saying, the schools, the, the programs, even like our, um. I know I've talked to. Oscar Hernandez that does the full choreo dancers, you know, they're always in need of, of doing a fundraiser or, or they're going to, um. Dance it, you know, just say UCLA for they, they need funding to take their, their students. Maybe that's something that we can utilize, you know, to have a dan- uh, I know they always do it at the Pioneer Village, but sometimes it's super hot, you know? Uh, maybe that's something they can utilize or also in, you know, speaking with our, our Sikh family is what I call them, you know? They did a beautiful. I don't know if I'm saying this right, Ban. Banugara. Bhangra dancing. It was amazing. Um, maybe we could, you know, they can do a special day and have people come out and do, um. You know, an event. I mean, these are things that, um, that makes Elma, you know, and coming together. And seeing this is just beautiful and, and knowing that the city wants to also. Help out these groups, you know, it, it, it just goes a long ways. So.
I absolutely agree and I will refer, I will, you guys are in my brain. It's kind of, it's, it's awesome for me. In my presentation, the very first slide, I talk about the six different that I called divisions within my department and very first is cultural arts. Because we have been talking internally about how I truly believe, and I heard someone else say this, but, um. Diversity is our strength. And so including cultural arts in community services as its own division to me was something that was incredibly important because. We should absolutely be, be celebrating the diversity that we have in this community. So it's, it's really the first line. I mean, I could pull it up right now and check. It's that very first line because you're absolutely right. We do need to get better at celebrating that and the city needs to take. Ownership of that and really kind of be the ones that are facilitating those types of activities. Absolutely.
And we need a trademark. We need a theme. You know, we're, the raising capital of the world. Is a, is a little worn, you know, and what better than to have these creative people from the art center engage in a contest or something about.
Absolutely.
What is Selma's theme?
Yep. I could not agree more. You are, you are speaking my language. Absolutely. That's exactly what we're looking for is how, how do we take this into the beginning?
A lot of people already. They just haven't had an outlet for it yet.
Yep. No, I'm excited. I'm excited. All right. So next up is special events. So special events for us are those annual type events that the city becomes known for hosting, right? Every year we get excited about that because we know there's going to be some sort of fall event. We know there's going to be some sort of holiday event. We know there's going to be some sort of spring event. And then this year we'd really like to do a movies in the park concert series or, uh. Movies in the park series and partner with, with local partners to make these sort of things happen. So. You'll see an additional ask for that. Again, this is part of the general fund impact, but we do plan on offsetting that some with maybe. You know, maybe snack bar sales or vendors or however we decide to do it, but there, that's not just a hard cost. There won't, there will be some cost recovery involved with that as well. Um, in addition to that, you'll also see an ask for recreation programs. Again, these are going down those new GL codes that I talked about earlier so that we really start to identify. What the need is in the community and I'll go over how we're going to get to a lot of that in that presentation. But that's kind of why you're seeing things the way that they are currently right now. Again, youth sports, we would like to hold some, some sports camps. We've got a lot of really great facilities around here. You know, there might be some opportunities for summer camps and different things like that, that we should be doing here in our community and we want to be able to. But we also want to be able to do it responsibly and be able to track those data points so that every year we can continue to grow on those programs and those services. Adult sports, um, my team is very excited. They would love to bring in some new adult leagues, whether it's pickleball or kickball or different things for the adults to do as well. While, uh, uh, we have a lot of amazing partners that do, um, youth sports or youth leagues. We do need some additional adult sport activities here in this community. So that's what you'll see that cost for. And then last but not least, in talking with the art center and this is equipment and all of these sort of things. Their microphone system is just not in a great place. And if they don't have microphones, they can't put on shows. And so this is kind of my big. Equipment asked for the year. It's me. I'm just laughing. So sorry. So, um, that's really the big ask there. And this really is just so that they can. Better serve our community. They are breaking left and right. They're, and, um, they're just old. They cost a lot of money in batteries. They use the old school batteries. It's just not a cost effective event right now.
Are they still using those same mics? Two thousand and thirteen. I remember, remember those mics. They didn't work that well back then.
No, they did not. So, um, they've made some minor upgrades, you know, here or there as they break, but really what it comes down to. You guys know technology, by the time it's in our hands, it's outdated, right? We just, we know that as a society. So. What we want to do is really just enhance all of that. It'll bring down the long-term costs. And then we can, and go from there. So that's really like I said, that's.
Individually mic the folks or do you have area miking that?
They individually mic. And so there'll be different opportunities in the future and this new equipment will be able to be more diversified into the future as we add to it. Any other questions for me?
I just wanted to, um. Say, great job. I, I just actually was having this conversation with a bunch of, well, not a bunch, but, um, some, some ladies over in the. The meet and greet in the ride at the park. On Saturday and it, it's, you know, we don't have anything. So that's. Their perception is someone doesn't have anything. Yes, we have, like you said, the fall, the spring and the, this, the, um, holiday events. But this is just something that, you know, I'm so glad that you're on board because yes, your thought processes is. I want to do more. I want to do more. And you don't need to show us your little. Thing have, I know, because you showed me the other day, you know, your other, I told you I need PPPs. You said, that's what I have on my board. So I believe you. But yeah, this is just really a good start and, and I'm for. The fact that you're, you know, getting the statistical information because yeah, you, you don't know what you don't know. Right? And you can't quantify. Our needs and, and really, you know, move forward and what is it that we need? So I really commend you for, um. Bringing this forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes. And because we are supported by the general fund, we, my team and I are very aware that we are fiscally responsible. To spend that money to the best of our ability. And by doing this, this way, we will start to be able to gather the data points that we need to make better decisions, even better decisions in the future. So thank you.
And we are the only city? That has a publicly supported theater? Fresno County, is that correct? Did Reedley, Reedley used to have one? Do they still have one?
I'm not sure. That's a good question.
I believe Reedley is still, I think it's still a partnership at Reedley, but it's not. Completely.
I think we're the, we're the only. How much is the expenditure? Uh, but I mean, I think that's just something we can let. Everyone know about. It's such a selling point for Selma. Brings people here. Brings people to shows. It keeps them here for, for nightlife. They go to the bar afterwards. They go. You know, go engage in nightlife. I mean, it's, it's a really, really good thing for our city and we can, we can capitalize on that. We can do even more. I love, love hearing that.
Yeah. And that's exactly what we want to do. And using the art center as that cultural arts hub into the future is another one of our goals so that we can continue. To expand that side of the program because I mean, you can't go anywhere with this, within this city and not see the diversity that we have here. So, um, we really, really want to celebrate that.
Okay.
Thanks. Thank you.
Forty? Was it forty-five?
Uh, for the public. We're gonna, yeah. So the question was from the council about, um, incorporating the money that was budgeted for the downtown speakers. And I mentioned to the council that. We are carrying that over. Uh, we're actually, we're going to be proposing in the operational budget to increase that amount so that we can, um, it aligns more with the actual cost. So. It's going to be estimated more like eighty thousand, but it's not part of this presentation right now, but it will be in the draft budget.
Can, can you actually, also when you bring that up, can you bring back what the geographic area? What area is going to cover or what are you covering?
Yeah, I have before you, um, is the information technology upgrades that are needed, uh, within the IT infrastructure of the city first. Proposed for next year is the, um, Microsoft Office three sixty-five, which is, um. Just where the industry is right now. We're currently a server-based email system. And so to bring us up to speed, uh, to the rest of the market and where the industry is working right now. That's going to be a one-time cost of twenty-five thousand, six hundred and an ongoing annual cost per user, uh. For all the users, an annual cost of sixty-one thousand citywide.
Does that include, um, maintenance with it? Does that include troubleshooting and, and tech supporters? Is that just a license to?
That's just license. Yeah. That's just license and backup. And so, um. Yeah. Um, we have that proposed coming out of the data processing fund, which is a internal service fund that. Combines the funding from all of the funding sources within the city to pay for, um. Information technology costs. And the next item that we're requesting, uh, for the next year, proposing for next year is the upgrade to the network switching. And that's a total cost of a hundred and four thousand, five hundred. Basically, um. The current status of the network switching between the city servers going out to the different sites. Um, it's very old and it's. Borderline to breaking point and it's better to fix it before it breaks because it can cause havoc on, um, our current operations.
Kind of like the, uh. The sewer line. On McCall, remember that? It came to, and it broke. And now this, and then we pay more rate than the other users.
It's more expensive when it breaks.
When it breaks.
Absolutely. It's being proactive to update our network switching for our servers, um, so that it doesn't break on us and, and do a break in. And as you know, information technology is the hub of everything we do. We can't, we're kind of limited to our, um. Abilities if our computers aren't working.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Uh, for community development, you have four projects before you. Um, the first being kind of. As a, as a planner, kind of a big deal. Um, a general plan update, which would be. You know, a priority in. Almost everything that the city does. You have various elements of the general plan that address. Land use, infrastructure, parks, community facilities. So a lot of the master plan that we're talking about. In terms of growth would come from this plan. Uh, setting policies for. Uh, setting policies for how we grow, where we grow. Uh, what, what type of facilities does the community want? So um, it's a big ticket item, but luckily the council has a fee in place to help fund this. That's ten percent of all building permit fees. But it's um, anticipated, and I think uh, city managers brought this up previously, that this is about half, is about half of the total cost of this item. In addition, it's a two to four year process. So this would pay for about half over the next two years. Um, additionally, you have a parks master plan, which would cover parks and facilities. That is being paid out of development impact fees at a budget of cost of about eighty grand. This again would allow us to establish uh, park types, what type of facilities do we want at the parks? General locations of those parks. Do we want dual use parks, skate parks, dog parks, what have you? Uh, community events, amphitheaters, you know, at community parks? How big do they need to be? Regional parks, what should the trade area be for a regional park? Do you have ancillary uses at those like snack bar? Community and locate them near commercial uses to get as much regional impact as you can to capture as much maybe revenue as you can for those type of facilities. So, sorry, too much coffee today. Um, so the parks master plan would really help rein in, I think, how we, how we develop our park system in the city of Selma. Um, next you have the Thompson Avenue Park um, design and planning for that, which is a uh, park located on the south side of town, um, which is being paid out of um, various grant funds. Um, and then last you have downtown revitalization through a downtown strategic plan, which we would use to establish, you know, policies, maybe architectural design, you know, uh, events. How do we, you know, capture the synergy at downtown to bring the community together? And uh, we've already obtained a grant for that funding or funding for that grant through Fresno Cog to do that plan, so.
That the TOD?
Yes.
Like free money, isn't there every year? It's awesome.
Jerome, I just have a quick question. I know we talked about this downtown, uh, the revitalization in regards to like a color coordination. Um, and, and we, we've talked about that a couple of years ago. We're like, you know, we thought, hey, pick three colors and that's kind of what we were going to do. Is that out of the, I mean, is that something now that the bid's going to have to be responsible for? Or is that something that the city is still going to consider doing?
I would imagine that as part of the development of the strategic plan, the bid would be involved. And those type of policies, design guidelines, architectural features um, would all be discussed as part of that process. And you know, if, if it's three colors, four colors, maybe facade design like brick, um, awning size, color design. Um, I mean, the, the obvious example that I would give in terms of coordinated design would be Old Town Clovis. In terms of how they've developed a plan to make every business that comes in resemble one another, but represent Old Town Clovis.
Yeah.
Right? So the coordination would be driven by the city, but I would assume it would be in collaboration with the bid.
That's a good, that's a good statement.
Cause we've been waiting.
Cause I, yeah, I'm, I, I have a couple of buildings, you know, and I'm like, I don't want to paint them.
Yeah, we wanted, we waited till
Some that, yeah, some that have awnings and some that don't. The ones that don't look nice. And I have another one over there that doesn't have awning. I'm just waiting and you know, the thing, I, are you, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions um, in regards to the general plan update. I don't, anytime, you know, we sat here a couple of days ago in regards to our council meeting and we seen so much development come. My biggest concern is, and I know we've been talking about this, but at one point, and this is just an open question, when we're designing and updating our general plan, at what point do we include the school district to start talking about a new high school and a new ju- junior high? And I mean, we have the ability to start orchestrating the free land, right? So we start saying, hey, our development's going to, Amberwood's going to have six hundred, eight hundred homes. Raven's going to have three hundred homes. Maybe it's best to put a junior high and a brand new high school. When do we have and, and at what point do we start having dialogue with the school district to let them know that? Hey, this is this, this is a sphere of influence we have. This is where we wanted to navigate, you know, construction. Because, you know, I'm a, I'm a foreseer that, you know what? We don't look at right now, we look at five, ten, twenty years, right? So when we start doing our, our, our general plan and our, our strategic plan, at what point do you see us having a conversation with the school district to start having those dialogues? Because it's very important. I feel.
You're not wrong. Um, so I have two answers. Staff is um, I believe required to provide information to the school district in regard to how many units are being constructed. They usually ask for project related information on where those units are. So they're actually already out ahead, maybe looking at property to build ele- elementary schools, middle schools, high schools. That being said, the general plan update process would definitely include local stakeholders, including all the school districts, including, you know, any other districts, S K F, uh, Cal Water, so that we can plan infrastructure in accordance with the proposed land use. So if the city decides to grow a certain direction, we would have, I think, most general plans have a term referred to as floating school sites to where you say, in this general area, there should be an elementary school. Identifying specific property can be, you know, a little hasty because you're increasing the value of that school uh, or I'm sorry, of that property, maybe prematurely before you have developer, development in place. So having a floating school site gives flexibility in the event that you have multiple developers in an area and it just gives the school district an idea of where they should start looking.
I have one more. I know we talked about this, the formal downtown plan, the hundred and fifty thousand is carried over from the money that we got from Cog. Okay, and um, I know we've talked about this in the past, but we're incorporating that money, moving it over to this year, correct? Okay, so, and we're moving over the thirty thousand for the speakers. Do we actually, and, and I shouldn't be asking this question, but um, I have to. How we visual, is it the B I D that's going to tell us, hey, look? Yeah, we got the color scheme. Hey, look, you know what? We don't want the sidewalk. We don't want the brick no more, we want it to be concrete. Uh, we want um, I'll say it best, uh, I'm going to use Woodlake. I go to their downtown and it's got, you know, they got, they got a certain way of how they have sidewalks. They have a certain way, they have a crosswalk, they have a certain way, they have trees, they have a certain way. And, and my, I guess the last two, two, three years, we've been, we've all been talking about how we want to structure the downtown. At what point in time, who is the, is it the B I D that's going to structure that? Or is it us? Or is it the community involvement? What, where do we start?
And I'll say yes. But um, typically speaking, oversight for the setting of design guidelines is set by the city through your police powers as the land use authority of, of the city, of the city of Selma. Um, however, typically speaking, the develop of any community plan involves the community, community stakeholders such as the bid, maybe local business owners and any other age, you know, group such as, I don't know, uh, Rotary, other people that have community interest um, that can provide input. But the ultimate approval authority of the downtown uh, strategic plan would be the city council.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy City Manager. And I would add, I mean, this conversation really picked up steam when we started the um, zoning ordinance update. And we started talking about, okay, well, what are the general guidelines that we're going to enforce as part of this new development code? And I think the development standards, as Deputy City Manager um, alluded to, is where we're actually going to decide and enforce, you know, what the colors are, whether there's awnings, what, you know, when the sidewalk breaks and we talked about this at the last meeting, are we going to replace it with the same sidewalk or new stamped concrete? You know, those are all things, so the downtown strategic plan is going to lay out the overall theme. Like what do we want the theme of downtown to be? And then with the zoning um, standards, then we're going to say, okay, in order to conform to this general theme, these are the actual specific things you have to do as part of your developments, your upgrades, your facade improvements, all of that kind of stuff. So yeah, it all plays together and the, the downtown businesses and, you know, like, as Jerome said, I mean, we're going to have to also reach out to um, you know, your um, different contractors as well and get some ideas about, okay, really, what is the feasibility of us being able to enforce these specific colors, these palettes, these, you know, design architectural things? But um, yeah, that's all the conversation we're going to be having.
And it has to be an interplay, right? It has to be a conversation between everybody, between the business owners, between the citizens, people who use the parks and city council. I mean, we, we could be their, their mouthpiece. We need to reflect those, those views and have that discussion about it. Cause there are a lot of different viewpoints and that's a good point about feasibility. Uh, we can't go in and recreate the downtown, it's just not going to happen. But we have a pretty nice one right now. We've got some, some good bones, as they say, and just build on that and take community input from that and, and move forward.
And I just like to add is I think that what we want to hear, um, because I'm going to be very honest. This has been ongoing for many years and we've been very patient in regards to, okay. At one point, we even just said a color scheme because downtown is a hub and we want it to look nice. You know, we want it, even if it was that business owner or building owners, we were willing to say, we'll match um, so much out of our own pocket to start the color scheme. Because we waited, you know, we've been waiting. And I know John and I have stated, we don't want to paint our buildings again until we know what color scheme we're going to go to. So I think that we would like to start that conversation and we need to, I don't want to go another two, three years and say, here we go, here we are again, you know? I think we need to start it now and.
I've noticed a lot of buildings going away from, from awnings and it looks nice. So is that something that, you know, the community wants to do? Cause those are, those are two good topics that we could start off. This color scheme and do we want, do we want? That, that would be nice because that would give the city, and we have a structured plan and we go back to the historical. I mean, I believe that we should go back to the brick, but I torched the brick down, but whatever. You know, but we, they're, they do have brick. I mean, the bricks looks nice, so, but it's, it's
It could be something we could turn the B I D loose on too. See, because they're closer to the business owners. They're the ones who talk to them, they're the ones who are the business owners and could come back and give us some really good information on that. And then we could make the decision about it. But we would get that information, ground level, that we need to make a real decision, informed decision.
I, I have a question. Um, you say, you say downtown, downtown. Where, where's that encompass? Where does it start like from corner of East Fronts down Second, around High to one, now we're all the way down to Nelson's. I mean, that's what I'm kind of curious about, because I know I'm not downtown, so.
There is, and we, we came, we had a meeting
During the B I D.
The Business Improvement District included a boundary map for downtown, yeah.
I mean, downtown just seems like downtown when you say that, but, but you know, I never saw anything.
We approved, we approved it.
Yeah. So is that a whole district now?
It's a district.
Okay, no, I didn't.
And you would think we would, we would get more participation of the people who want to be on the board. And so I know it's so new, so hopefully it will, you know, get more popularity as people jump on and um, and publicize it and we get people participating in it. I think it's going to be really important, get everybody's participation in that.
You said something about, you know, having that Old Town feel, you know, feel. And so I look back, I've seen some pictures, I think you have some in your, in your restaurant that shows what downtown used to look like. And I would just love to see that, you know, that kind of um, facade, I guess is what it's called. And to keep that, you know, downtown look, because some is beautiful community. And just like, you know, Old Town Clovis and they just have that old style look, but modernize it a little bit, you know? So I, I, I really liked what you said about that, but this is um, great information, thank you.
Thank you, Jerome. Uh, with regard to Public Works, um, just a, a couple of quick items, um, and nothing um, too large in terms of proposed expenditures, but just because they're not huge expenditures, doesn't mean they won't have a big, big impact. Um, as far as the skid steer loader, it's extremely, it was surprising for me to hear that we don't have a Bobcat within the um, Public Works Department, which should be a standard piece of equipment. Um, and when we need it, you know, we have to go rent it. And you know, the, the times that we've had to rent it, by now we would have been able to purchase a new one. So um, that's one of the proposed expenditures and it's being uh, proposed to be funded through the gas tax funds that we have. Because it is uh, mostly going to be used for street maintenance and rehabilitation projects. Um, and then even more significant is a new lawnmower that's going to increase um, our efficiency when we're maintaining the parks, it's going to require. We have one that just went out of service. Um, and um, it's extremely important for us to be able to replace that equipment. Um, just like with the ambulances where one goes out of service, we need to have a backup um, to be able to keep those parks well maintained. So that one would estimate it uh, to cost eighty thousand dollars. And so we're looking for an overall expenditure for these two items at a hundred and forty five thousand. Any questions?
How's staffing?
Staffing is um, improving, though we're not really close to where we want to be. Um, we had, the, the very positive thing is that with every new recruitment, we're getting a lot more applicants and the candidate pool is extremely promising. Um, so for, with our last recruitment for maintenance worker uh, ones, um, we had about a hundred and fifty applicants and we had to screen a lot of them. Um, and then we had a preliminary testing, an actual in-person testing where they had to identify tools and things like that. And then we, so we narrowed it down to about thirty five candidates. And now um, on Tuesday of next week, we'll have the secondary testing where they'll actually be more hands on. Um, and so we'll be able to um, select five candidates from that pool. But it, it was a great pool to recruit from and we're hoping that that continues with our next recruitment. Yep.
Mayor, council members, now we get to have the fun talk about the streets and pipes and all the fun stuff. Uh, the first slide uh, is a list of more of the programs and studies and uh, elements that'll fall under professional services in the engineering realm. The first one is the, the storm drain master plan. And this is, uh, it's been worked on in the last few years, but it does uh, need to be finished. And this line item is budgeted to take all of the data that has been prepared in the past and get it to the finish line. So uh, this would be a consultant that would be hired to finish the master plan to bring it to you for adoption. Obviously, this is something that helps us with growth, helps us uh, maintain or fix, infill areas that need to drain better. So that's uh, the storm drain master plan. The next item is the public works standards. And those are little eight and a half by eleven sheets that are very specific on how uh, developers that come into town. This is what you build. This is how Selma is built at the little tiny pieces and very specific. And it's very important that we uh, keep those up to date for ADA purposes or new equipment, new ways of dealing with uh, different uh, storms, books, sorry, storm drain sewer, different elements. So uh, that line item would be a consultant that would be hired to uh, review what we have uh, under my direction, making sure that everything is cohesive and uh, and add additional items that are lacking now.
Twenty years does that get updated?
It, it really should be a living document, so it's um,
Every three?
Yeah, ev- every, the public work standards is multiple sheets. So if like cameras on a signal mast arm, as that comes up, we update that.
Okay.
Individual standard. So this line item and this request for a budget is to, to look at them on a holistic level of what standards are old, need to be updated and what standards are missing. Uh, the next item, it's, it's titled P L S S, that's the Public Land Survey System. That's every half a mile, there's a little brass marker at the middle of the street. Uh, our entire nation is built upon that system. So in Selma, we have fifty four little monuments that tell us where every center line is, where every property line is, every developer that comes into town, they have to go survey that one little marker. Where every property line is, every developer that comes into town, they have to go survey that one little marker. We don't, if we don't keep those up to date and if they get lost, if the construction comes through and destroys it accidentally. We don't know where the property lines are. So this request is uh for us as a city surveyor to spend some time to go out and. Look at each monument. We can measure and we make reference monuments so that we, that we publish that with the Fresno County Surveyor. Any surveyor can get that information and everybody that does development in Selma is on the same system. Uh, that's city surveyor's worst nightmare when you can't find one and then the developer asks, well, where's your street? So that's, that's what PLSS stands for, uh, the benchmark item is the vertical. So uh the same way with trying to define where the streets are. We need to be able to provide developers with a system that's consistent across the entire city. Vertically, so that our sewer goes downhill. Uh, there are only, there are very few benchmarks in the city of Selma. So that line item is a request for uh the city surveyor and our staff. To, to do levels, to make sure we have enough information to provide new developers or infill. Uh, engineers and surveyors with the correct data.
And you handle the surveying too, Yamabe and Horn, okay?
The next item is the ADA Transition Plan. I believe the information that I've been able to find is that the council approved. Uh, adopted an ADA plan in two thousand ten and then had a self-evaluation. And a transition plan prepared in two thousand eleven. So that's twelve years old at this point, it's um, it's a mandate from the federal government. And the state to continually evaluate your, our. Streets, our programs, our facilities and make sure that they're accessible. Uh, so this line item would request a consultant to be able to. Uh, not start from scratch, but really update what we already have. Looking at new areas, looking at sidewalks that do not comply with ADA. Uh, and that, uh, that transaction plan then is kind of a ma- a master plan for us. As we choose capital improvement projects that include sidewalks and ramps. We know which ones need to be up, upgraded.
Aren't the sidewalks the responsibility of the building owners in front of them?
That's in the municipal code, so when we get grants, uh, like the CDBG money that we got, we are, we are doing some work in the downtown. Where we are upgrading and taking care of some of the, the ramps.
They're an eastman, so the city can just go in and improve them, okay?
I don't know what's more scary, are you saying that it was done in two thousand ten or it was information I was able to find, um? When you uh, when you're looking at this, when you're making an assessment, does that tell me that we're working off of? We're working off of information from two thousand ten and we're updating it to the point today's date? And how long do you go back and we, we, they, they goes back to our municipal code and we just update it every? Three years or with?
Yeah, the, the federal ADA hasn't changed, California Building Code, that changes every three years. The California Building Code technically doesn't apply to public right-of-way. Federal law applies to public right-of-way, we use the California Building Code as a standard as we design things. Every plan that I review from developers, I, I use the current building code. To make sure that they're following, so the transition plan isn't a, a guideline that I'm checking against for their project. I'm using the current building code, the current requirements. The ADA Transition Plan is really information that we need to know of which areas of the city need some improvement.
Good, thank you.
Uh, the, the next item is the Street Saver PCI, it's a pavement condition index. Uh, this is that software that you've approved in two thousand nineteen. The engineers went out, looked at every piece of pavement in the city. Uh, through a technical review and a report, have established a number, an index, zero to a hundred, bad or good. And the software we use helps us see which streets, which pavements are deteriorating at a certain rate. Uh, you'll, you'll see later that that's one tool that I use for choosing which street sections might need to be repaired. Maintained or replaced, so, but this budget item request is that over time. Software isn't perfect, so we uh would request a consultant or our staff to be able to. Go out to the newer areas or certain. Event, street sections and, and make sure that the software is actually resembling reality.
I'm sorry, I have another question, this is part of my, this is a part of stuff I love. In regards to that software, are you guys using that in the alleys of the businesses also? Sorry, the alley, the alleys, the, the, the alleys of the business area, the, areas, the, the commercial. Are you using that same software, are they, are we using that same technology on the um? On the um.
It's not in the alleys, right, so just the streets were indexed. So I'm, I'm looking at alleys when we look at capital improvement projects and Public Works. Brings information to us that, hey, this alley is horrible, so let's look at it.
And you're gonna come back to the council with the report on which streets? Need the pavement, you know, based on the score of, you know, which need the most?
The, the request was um to present what our actual method of selecting these projects and that's what the city engineer has been working on.
Some of those alleys are really bad, they have some really bad potholes.
And on, yes, I agree. We're looking at them. Uh, that was the PCI.
That'll be good evidence too, because we heard Mr. Jimenez from the county say that. Right, he said that there are um benefits or there are grants for the city to get to. Work on some of those streets that aren't necessarily in the city limits, but are within the sphere of influence. Which was kind of news, I think, to a lot of people that night, that there's that, that funding for that and I would imagine. You need to use the PCI for that to justify that funding, or that could be one tool.
It's one tool, yeah, they're, they're, they're. Numerous, and it's helpful. Uh, the next item is that the broadband master ban, plan. Uh, that's a, uh, something that came up at the council the other night, but it uh is a similar type of master plan, which we look at the entire city. And uh, this would be for a consultant to look at existing facilities, whether they're. Coming to the library or coming to specific areas and then work with community and vendors and um. People, uh, the, the service providers that bring broadband into town. How would we plan on creating a better backbone uh to improve that service? So similar to a water or sewer infrastructure, broadband is the same thing.
Road of information, right?
Yep. And the last one on this, this page is a traffic circulation master plan, so again, it's a, it's a planning master plan, looking at the city. Uh, there are elements in the general plan with circulation, so this is what supports that. Looking at our major streets, the arterios, the collectors, the local streets. Um, the master plan for this would, would look at existing, would, would then try and. Either look at some roads that could be what we call road diet, or maybe it's too large and it's too many, the, the speeds are too high, so let's. Let's shrink it down a little bit and use it in other ways, where there's obviously signals or other roads that, based on development and planning. Need to get larger or, uh, you know, what, how would we handle the traffic impacts for new development? That, that's the traffic circulation master plan. Any questions on that page, that's more of the consulting section? The next page I. Since I'm the city surveyor, wanted to add a map, so this is a, a map of the city. I'm sorry if it's small, but we wanted at least try and provide it for your reference, the little numbers uh. On each blue line refer to the next two pages, two or three pages. Uh, each of the lines in the next few pages have numbers on them. So let's skip past that, you can refer to it. All right. We have till like nine o'clock or what did you say? I'll run through these, a lot of these, sorry.
Why time, no?
Uh, a lot of these projects are projects you're probably familiar with, uh, they're ongoing projects. But it, uh, is important for us to have them on this list so that we. Um, my goal this next year is really to, to work hard to get these projects done. Uh, we're working on finishing the projects from this year. Uh, there, you will start to see construction in the next few weeks. Uh, we have bids opening every week for the next four weeks, so these, these projects are what we're budgeting and planning for next year.
City engineer, sorry to interrupt, in the interest of time, i- is the council okay with um? If, if you have any questions on any of these specific items on this page to ask a question, I think most of these are projects that we're familiar with, but if you'd like to just. You know, pick any out that you have questions on, um, rather than going through them individually.
A quick clarification, you said that the bid opening is one a week for the next few weeks? For all of these or just, which ones did you mention, sorry?
The, the projects from this last year, so, sorry.
I, I don't have a question, but I have a remark in regards to all this here.
What's that?
I would love to have a um, maybe a, a, a project detail listing as we go during the year. In regards to these projects, maybe pay, maybe put a, uh. An anniversary date of what you think it's gonna end and when it started and maybe, maybe every two, three months, just, you know, throw a little. Email to us, an update, and that would be nice, I mean, I'm just my own recommendation.
Go ahead, Deputy City Manager.
I would assume we could do a similar update, similar to the development project update with kind of a tracker. Of where it's at and we can update it so that you can compare them from, and just kinda keep a similar format going, correct?
If we, if you ran into a delay, tell us what happened, just because.
Something in writing, something periodic.
Hard to keep track of everything without seeing it.
And I, I don't anticipate those presentations to be as long as they were at the city council meeting, it would just be updates of where they are in the process and. Some projects may have no update, because you know, for whatever reason, the applicant hasn't submitted their plans. But for uh capital improvement projects, we can do a similar tracker uh that we did for the development project, so it's easy from meeting to meeting to track progress.
Thank you.
I would just like to ask about uh number twelve Clarkson Lift Station. I know back in October, we talked about that in regards to getting a depth upgrade. Where, where are we with that?
We've met a couple of times with SKF, we have finally received some plan check comments from them. They ended up uh sending the plans out to a third-party uh plan check company. And when they did that, they, they got a very thorough review and. Made some actual changes to how they want to operate the lift station, so our consultant has already made those changes. Uh, has uh sent those uh revisions back to their third-party reviewer. Uh, to get buy-off from them and SKF, that this is actually how you want the lift station to be figured. That has been approved, uh, currently right now, with those changes. The electrical engineer portion of it is having to redesign uh the electrical service. Because of how they, they wanted to change some of the pumps, change the horsepower, uh, the service now will be a four-eighty electrical service. Which SKF is fine with, so currently the, in, the electrical engineer is redesigning his set of the plans for those changes.
We have an estimated timeline on, and I know we've talked about this pretty frequently, but the um bid, when we, when we might expect to go out to bid for the construction?
Currently, my schedule with Jerome is at the end of June. Uh, I'm getting an update from the consultant and the electrical engineer on their timeline with having to make the changes based on what SKF and. Their. Asked for.
I was just at the SKF budget meeting and on their CIP, they've got the um. The Clarkson upgrade, they're doing some upgrades to Clarkson as well. Twenty-five and twenty-six, I mean, it, it's out a few years, will that affect? The upgrade that the, the city is doing to the um, to the Clarkson line?
Uh, I don't think so, no, I, I think we'll, we'll be complete in terms of our upgrades by then.
What, what would their upgrade, I asked Veronica, she said it's, it has nothing to do with the, the city upgrade, it's just the Clarkson line that they're upgrading.
What, the only thing I can think of, and if you know anything else, David, um, is, would be the, the um. Line that goes from the lift station to the water treatment facility, um, because that's not a city-owned facility, that actually is. SKF's responsibility.
So you think they might be widening the line?
Or rehabbing it in some way, yeah, I think because of the upgrade to the lift station, it's gonna require either.
Cause I asked, does the city gonna have to pay for this, like we did for the, the new, the new upgrade and she said, no, this is a, this is an SKF. Yeah, so what, that's an R and R, that's more of a refurbishment.
Refurbishment, cause it goes to the water treatment facility rather than collecting Selma's own items, yeah. So yeah, I think that's probably what it is, but we can clarify that, David, if you don't mind.
Sounds good.
Mr. Mayor, was that, uh? As we reviewed the.
It's on their CIP, yeah, yeah, we just got it today, I didn't have a chance to look at it, I leave the meeting early, but it's.
Okay, I'll look into that.
Yeah, we, we gave SKF significant comments on their CIP and their budget and um, I think that was one of those items that we.
They had a section where it wasn't a part of Selma and so.
They incorporated the ESF, the number of ESFRs per the city of Selma comments, so that's, they, they said city of Selma made. Way more comments than any other city and they're reflected in their uh, their CIT, CIP, so it's really good stuff.
Now there, this is the. Uh, just to make a point, uh, I believe that fourteen and beyond are projects that I, our team. In collection with Public Works, all of the information that we use to select street projects. Those are new street reconstruction, maintenance projects that we're proposing to add. To next year's uh process of doing uh construction, repair and maintenance. Everything up to uh that number are, are ongoing projects.
And how do you decide on the, on the alleys, which alleys to pave and repave and to look at?
It's, it, it's a similar process when we look at the streets, Public Works has, has been good. And, and you'll see when we provide the documentation of my meth, our methodology and the different pieces that we use. Public Works is uh one piece of that and it's all part of maps, so everything I do is on a map. And so once you layer all those maps together, then that, you can kind of see where areas that need to be focused on, so the alleys were discussed with Public Works. I've looked at them, uh, tried to look at alleys that uh impact multiple areas and that have safety problems. Uh, so it's, it's a part of the process.
You guys, do you take into consideration, when you look at the alleys and you're taking this, you said safety? And I've been thinking about this, uh, you know, a lot of the alleys in our, in our community or, or business district, um. The trash cans, all, everything, do, do you see the way, I mean, I, have you guys gone there and seen them? Because. I, I, I fight it, you know, and I'm, I'm, I'm always finding a way to get him closer and. And I have to, I always get out there and I move all the neighbors just to keep them out of the, the road. So do we have any uh thought to, when we start structuring and we do rehab the alleys, do we have any uh thought processes to? I guess, um, speaking to our, our um. Trash people, yeah, in regards to, oh, maybe to work it out and do something to a point, or could we do that and maybe keep that in mind?
And, and I would say, um, that comes down to two. Um, functions of the city code enforcement and also our development standards, if somebody is um making upgrades to their. You know, commercial location requiring development standards, and our municipal code requires that if you're making improvements. Where you're adding a, a certain amount of square footage, you're required to in, incorporate a new trash enclosure, right? Keep it out of the alley and things like that, so, yeah, but code enforcement is a big aspect of that.
And then in terms of our engineer, are, are we looking for a full-time engineer as an employee on staff as well?
That is the ultimate goal, um, it's extremely hard, uh, right now, we're focusing um on um. An engineering technician, as you know, we recently went out to RFQ for engineering services and we, we're gonna be um recommending. Approval of awards um for that contract um in the, at the next council meeting, um, but. The goal is to work towards getting an engineering technician and then ultimately finding a staff um engineer. It's extremely difficult and the engineering firms, they, they deal with this every day, finding qualified licensed engineers. To even work as consultants, much less for a city government.
I was gonna say, how, how are you guys doing, are you guys always looking for a good qualified staffing as well, always a struggle?
Yeah, if you have names.
No.
Yeah, it, it, yeah, it is, but.
And you're the horn of Yamabe and Horn, is that correct?
Yes.
So, and we've had other engineers in the past from your. So we've had other engineers in the past from your, from your company. Are you looking for someone to kind of put on Selma? And in the meantime, you're, you're kind of handling our city for us right now, cause you're involved in the same, looking for staffing that all the other cities and companies are?
Yeah, we, uh, we proposed, uh, for the, the R F P, we, uh, put our name in and my name is, is at the top of the, the list. So the proposal is that I would be the city engineer.
Yeah, there are no plans. The, the, the recommendation is gonna be for, um, Yamabean Horn to get the main city engineering contract and um, Mister Horn will be the full-time city engineer. There's no plans to replace him at any point. Yeah. Right for that.
Any other questions?
So yeah, with that, um, that concludes our presentation. Thank you again to Deputy City Manager Baines and, and the, uh, finance staff Andrea and Jacob for helping to put this together as well as the department heads, but, uh, we'd be happy to answer any additional questions at this time.
I, I just have a comment. Um, I, we've been in about three or four of these. And I think this is, to me, this is kind of, it, it's, it's, it really reflects what the, um, you know, we're, we're really, we were really, uh, able to, to understand and listen to our staff and then go back and we could come back and bring some more input. So I really appreciate what you guys did. I appreciate all you guys' presentations. For me, I thank you guys all. You guys did a great job. Thank you.
I would just like to add as well, I know that we had talked about the, uh, street signs that really need to be repaired because some of them are really, really bad. I mean, you can't even read the name anymore, uh, and some don't even have them, you know, so, um, would we be able to bring that back again in June to make sure that we do at least some funding, you know, like a master plan that we know, hey, this is what it's gonna cost to replace it. We can do as like chief state stated, this is, you know, priority, then, you know, we keep going down the line till we get them all replaced or, or the ones that need them. Um, so that's something that we're gonna, you know, can, I'd like to make sure that that's, that's in there as well. And then just to get an update again and I, you know, I know we're gonna keep talking about it, but the speed bumps, you know, that's another, um, a necessity, I think, and we just kind of have to just see where we're at with that, you know, I, I get it, chief, that it's a, uh, an emergency, um, probably downfall, maybe because of the emergency vehicles that really can't get through there or, or it slows you down, but I, I just don't wanna lose sight of the conversation. If it's something that maybe we could come up with something different, like Chief Alcaraz mentioned, there might be something different that they can do in regards to um, the lighting or the, the sidewalks, make them wider or something. You know, some, keep that in mind, or even just the lights, you know, where they can press the lights and they go on. I mean, that's, that's, I think to me, that's a big help. So those are just two things that it kind of came to mind and I just wanna still, still keep the conversation. So we know kind of where we, we are with that.
Just to, just to respond to that, um, the street signs are gonna be reflected in our operational budget because that's something that we're continuously working on and um, you've heard in previous council meetings, you know, we're gonna start with the street sign replacement and we'll bring a map back, but it'll follow the street sweeping route and that's how we're planning on replacing that. So they've already gotten started on creating those signs. Um, as far as these, uh, you know, speed bumps and, and traffic safety improvements, I know the chief, um, city engineer, um, Jerome, Deputy City Manager, um, Keen have all been having those discussions about, okay, what are, what do we want to propose that is minimal in terms of, um, the investment, but has the biggest impact right now and who do we need to talk to? To get the, the buy-in, um, that's gonna be part of the traffic, um, circulation plan as well in terms of traffic safe. We don't want to be piecemealing these improvements, but we wanna look at it holistically and, and they've made significant progress on that. And I don't know, chief, if you wanted to add to that or, or David.
What we're doing is looking at the local road safety plan and that was adopted a few years ago. And what, uh, chief has helped us with is getting police incidents from when that study was finished to now. And our staff is prepared to bring a, an update to the local road or an amendment to the local road safety plan, which will show priority intersections and segments based on that study and the methodology in that safety plan that was adopted previously. So then for those priority intersections or segments, we, we can go after funding, but then more importantly, it shows us areas that really need to have some attention now. And then what the traffic engineers on our staff present multiple options of potential solutions for that specific issue or area and, and for your consideration to, to make sure we're updating it at the right place at the right time.
The new street signs will have the block numbers. Yeah.
And then in terms of the finances, so we, we've looked at this, this looks great. I wanna thank staff. Great job. This looks really good. It's comprehensive, gives us a good roadmap. Um, it gives us something to talk about up here, which I think is really important and, uh, a really good, um, starting point. One of the things, um, that I'm seeing a lot is a lot of expenditures on consultants, consulting, and it's expensive. So, you know, you heard me a couple of days ago, I watched the money, that's why I got elected. That's one of my jobs. Um, and I didn't see the, the funding source in terms of the local agency investment fund. Are we gonna, are we gonna get a copy of that at the next meeting? Cause I thought we were gonna get a copy of this. Are we gonna do it at the next one?
Yeah, so, so the budget will incorporate what the general fund balances, um, and what we're budgeting out of that. And then we'll present a breakdown of what makes up the general fund, which LAF is absolutely part of that calculation. So you'll have that.
Will it have a breakdown of each account in the LAF?
Well, I don't think the LAF itself has an, a breakdown of accounts.
Yeah, so the LAF is, is similar to a bank account. So it's not really, so like, um, city manager explained last time. Um, city has various bank accounts where the, the funds sit, but we, we operate in a pooled cash environment. So there won't be a breakdown of.
So is it like a mutual fund? So I'm not trying to be difficult here. It's just, this is new to me. So I just wanna understand it.
Similar to a cash account. It's a.
Like when I look at my retirement account, it's broken down into different types of investments. Is that what the LAF looks like?
So the LAF is actually, um, maintained by the California State Controller's Office. Um, and so we invest our money with the state of California in their investment pool.
Okay. So there's a record of that, right?
Let me take, let me take a little step further. Can we have, the next time we meet for a workshop? Can we go back two years and explain to us? Because what we're doing right now is, you know, we're asking, you know, we as a council member only get directed by what staff gives us information to. I would love to go back and say, if the LEAF account in two thousand twenty and twenty-one and twenty-two had this amount, and this is the way it was operated, you can go back and see that because there's, there's accounts. And you can tell us if it's, if it's, if you're telling me that it's a, the LEAF account is including all thirty-two budget general ledgers or there's a hundred and seventeen accounts, right?
Yeah, so the, the, if I, if I'm a deputy city manager, so the LAF, think of it as, as a cash savings account or investment account, right? Well, so that's, that includes a balance right now of about twenty-three million dollars. Well, we give that to the state to invest. But when we're writing checks, when we're making expenditures, they don't come out of that account, right? That just makes up the entire fund balance of the general fund, um, among other funds like the enterprise funds. So it's not necessarily anything that we're, um, you know, making expenditures from or, or, or that's available for us to, to actually withdraw. I mean, we can withdraw and that's where we took the four million dollars from Umpqua because that's an investment fund and then we shifted it to another savings fund. Um, but at the end of the day, there's no account, specific accounts that relate to any of our, um, like budget accounts, right? So that, we're talking about cash versus, um,
I mean, not that I have any doubts about the financial acumen of the state, right? I'm kidding. They, they, uh, would it be nice to know where, um, where they put it?
So what I can do is, um, we can reach out to the state and get, are you more interested in what the city's balance is as opposed to how the state invests those funds?
No, I got the balance and I appreciate council materials. trajectory, it's twenty-three million.
Yeah, because.
Is it based on market value of securities? Cause it's gone down, right? It's gone from twenty-six to twenty-three. Is that based on the value, the, how the stock market is down these days, or it seems like they're, they're, they're pretty liquid investments that you could liquidate, right? Within like ninety days or something.
Um, well, uh, the entire balance of the LAF account is available to the city to withdraw on a daily basis.
Every day.
That's correct.
Okay.
And so it's, it's like a savings account that sits with the state of California. And so, um, we receive um, monthly int- sorry, quarterly interest, um, based on the, um, interest rate that is, uh, for that the entire investment earns.
I think, I think one of the, from my own perspective, I think understanding the fact that you see, and I'm gonna go back, I'm gonna go back to this. Um, we are, we are, we sit here to, to, to administer financial funds from our, for our community. We're the guy, we're the individuals that, right? So when we're projected and told that we have X amount of dollars, I mean, um, when I was elected in the city council, I sat here on this, me and Councilman Garrett, we sat here. We had all the department heads and we were told by our finance director, this, this individual has X, his budget is this amount. This is what he spends per year. And I asked them, what's the budget number? Boom. What's the next budget number? Boom. What's the next budget number? So I knew what budget number was the police department. I knew what budget number was the fire department. Where I'm going with this is this. If that LEAF amount is sitting there and you're telling me we can take it out whenever we want, but we don't know the projections of what we're gonna get every quarter or where we're getting it from or who's pulling from it. I would like to know the amount that we get per quarter, where the expenditures coming out of the last year because you're right, I wanna know how much we have. The inadequate amount, and I would love to entertain, to budget, to have it audited every two or three years to make sure we have a fund that is being audited and we understand it's a solid number.
And what it consists of, what those numbers are.
Yeah, you know.
You know, like where they come from? Where does that twenty-three million come from? And how much could we use? Look at, look, look at the sewer line. If we could use that instead of going out and borrowing money, why not?
I think the point that we're trying to make is that, that money is there, but it's not available to be used for expenditures like a twenty million dollar sewer line because it makes up a lot of the other things that the city has already committed to. Right?
That's what I'd like to see.
But then.
Do we see what percentage is already encumbered and what percentage does the council have to look at?
Yeah, so a- and the, I would go further. I mean, the LAF balance is just what it is. It's a balance, but this, uh, deputy city manager said it's available for us to withdraw any day, but, but we're not making withdrawals. If you look at the account statement, there hasn't been any activity in the LAF account besides our quarterly interest statements.
That's it, yes.
So we're, we're not, we're not using that money at all because it has to stay there for us to be able to support the general fund balances.
So is that separate to the general fund?
It makes up the general fund.
So how do you write a check on the LAF? How does?
You don't.
Um, what it is, is, um.
How do you withdraw them?
It's, it's a wire in, wire out.
So it would show on the check register, cause it shows the wire funds in, if there were any transfers from the LAF. But re- regardless, you think, can we just get an over, overview of this and the percentage of, you know, what's encumbered and what's not, so we can?
Is that something that we might be able to have ready for the draft budget? We're doing the reconciliations right now.
Oh, right. Yeah. So right now, what staff has been working on is, uh, doing the bank reconciliations. And so once that cash is reconciled, um, as far as bank reconciliations, we'd be able to provide a better distribution by fund, uh, for cash. Um, and.
How long do you think that would take you?
How many years are you doing reconciliation?
We're going back to April of twenty twenty-two, um, to prepare for the fiscal year twenty, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two audit. And so that's part of the.
So after the budget, you'd be ready to do it in July?
It would be sometime, I would say July or August, we can bring, bring something forward.
Could still look at that and potentially direct some money towards projects, right? From the LAF, even af- post-budget.
It would come out of the general fund.
Because you would go to the LAF, put it in the general fund.
So we, we provided you the balance of the general fund in some of these. Um, and so when you look at, for example, page six, estimated fund balance, general fund, fourteen million, two twenty-four, five eighty. Well, the twenty-three million that's in LAF is incorporated into that amount because it also incorporates our liabilities, right? Um, that we have. Exactly. So I, is that an accurate?
So let me take a stab at this. So, uh, think of the city having four bank accounts. So we have, or just the LAF account and we have our union bank accounts. Um, so the, the fund standing of each fund, it, so the twenty-three million dollars doesn't only belong to the general fund. If we operated in a pooled cash environment, so let's say, you know, um, cash can, cash within our operating bank account, which is the union bank account can fluctuate between funds. And so, um, what you're seeing here is the fourteen million is the fourteen million balance of the entire general fund. So a part of that is invested in LAF, a part of it is in Umpqua. A part of it is in our union bank accounts.
I get it. No, I'm Catholic. So we talk about the Holy Trinity, right? God, the Jesus and the Holy Spirit. So I mean, I get it. You know, there's a, it seems like it's consubstantial. The general fund and the LAF. I get it. If we could just get a little more detail, we could understand a little better in terms, because what I'm really looking for is how much we could use for some of these projects instead of having to go out and borrow money.
The, what we can use is the fourteen million. That's the general fund balance, um, that, um.
And the nine million is income, is what the city uses to pay regular bills?
Yep. And then we have the reserve of about five and a half million within that fourteen million. Yep.
Okay. Okay. Fourteen million.
Yeah. So let us catch up on the bank reconciliations, um, and then we, then we would bring a, a, perhaps a cash report or something to, to illustrate I, which I, which I understand you're trying to, um, look for.
Great, thank you. All right. Did, um, the, did anybody have anything they wanna say? Before we adjourn for the evening, do we have anybody online or on the phone? Who'd like to talk about the LAF for the Holy Trinity or public safety? All right. With that, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.